...of June 6th, 2019. I'd like to remind everybody this meeting is being recorded, so please silence your devices, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Terese is on his way. He has a flat tire, so he should be here probably within the next fifteen, twenty minutes. First, I'd like to call everybody's attention to the bottom of the agenda for the protocol around public comment, and I'm just going to read right from our agenda that's printed every two weeks. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the school committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of school committee business. The committee may respond to public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response at a future meeting. Public comment shall be for a period of up to fifteen to twenty-five minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. And if you want further information on that or clarification, you can see our school committee policy concerning public participation at school committee meetings and public comment, which is online. That said, do we have any public comment to start the meeting?
Yes. I was just turning my phone off once I could hear. Make sure. I'm sorry. You reminded me that I need to have my phone off.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Karen Loro at 591 Mass Ave, and I am representing the North Andover Parents and Kids for School Safety. And we do see that this is not a time for dialogue. We've asked for dialogue, and we're a group of about thirty people. Not everybody shows up every meeting. There might be more that show up this meeting. But apparently, since we've requested a dialogue and we've put forward our concerns, and it appears that you're addressing them by making some minor tweaks in policy, and then you refer back to a 1996 procedure that has really allowed, the implementation of the procedure has allowed really terrible things to happen for the last twenty years. So, we don't know how to open a dialogue, but it appears that thirty strong is not enough, and we have to go with a much larger platform to get your attention. So, you know, our approach was, we come to you, we try and work with you, and apparently, you don't really want to work with us. So, that's unfortunate, but these issues are still very much a concern, and we just have to broadcast them to a wider population and make sure that all the items are covered and get enough representation from the community to be able to open a dialogue with you. So, as I was saying, now, as far as funding, I just published in the North Andover Community Watch a number of funding opportunities related to this. So, it's, the Justice Department last October issued seventy to eighty million dollars' worth, and a few million came to Massachusetts. And I itemized them, and I will get them to you via email. So, I mean, I am a past NSF and NIH fellow. I have lots of DARPA programs that I obtained funding for. So, I know how to go about getting money, okay? And I understand. But this feeds into the bigger issue that basically, when students are, okay, young people, until they're roughly around twenty-five, do not have a strong executive function, okay? Unless it's taught, okay? And when they lose hope of the future, and they are alienated by some of the practices that happen. So, instead of getting support, they get counter-support. That leads to mass school violence, which is understood to be a major issue today. And North Andover tends to not strongly report to the state incidences, because we know of incidences happening that didn't show up in the state records. So, excuse me, what we, so, those two factors that kids are being made to feel their life is hopeless and they're angry, okay? Several of the kids involved here have become suicidal. I won't mention names. So, you know, a suicidal student is a candidate for mass violence. And so, that needs to be detected, and that's understood to be a major issue in this country today, and that's what the funding is about. It's about a violent end. I can, I was going to read more of the consolidated consensus list today, but I realize we need to regroup and amass more force, because basically, I've seen that in the last four months, you've done relatively nothing at addressing our issues. So, we have to regroup and figure out, and there's some other issues that really are equally pressing that need to be addressed with the school committee.
Thank you. That's way past three minutes, but that, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
All right. We'll welcome our students for the student report.
Any others?
Oh, sorry. Any other public comment?
I'm sorry. Yeah, of course. Of course.
Sorry.
No, thank you. We don't usually get it at the beginning of the meeting, so.
I know. Well, I thought you don't want to go watch the Bruins, so I'll be quick.
Are we playing tonight?
Yeah, right. My name is Rebecca Healy. I live at 33 Edmunds Road in North Andover. So, I, just quick, okay, I'll be quick. I wanted to, yes, talk about the handbook. I have noticed, and I respect the amount of effort and consideration that you're putting into revising the handbook. I'm sensing that you're very product-oriented in thinking about what the handbook is going to look like. I'm a little bit more process-oriented, kind of meaning that what the handbook says we're going to do in a given situation might not be what actually plays out. There are various reasons why this could occur, none of them having to do with negligence or incompetence. Often, it has to do with a lack of funding, but if the handbook says if student does A action, he's going to get B consequence, or if teacher reports C, she's going to get D support, that might not be happening. I think that what everybody's wondering is how this student, Tuttel, escaped the screening system. It is a valid question. A student like this should be filtered through the PBIS-TSS process. That should be catching them. The system is designed to do that. So, we need to ask ourselves maybe why that didn't occur. Again, none of this is having to do with anybody's incompetence at all. If I were to hazard a guess, and this is just a guess, the problem might lie with the middle school. I sense that we might be funneling too many students from several elementary schools into one building, possibly putting a strain on its infrastructure of TSS, PBIS, guidance, administration, et cetera. That's a guess. But just some things that you can do, some things that you can consider. You might need more BCBA's per building, however many you have. You probably need more. We could always use more guidance. Just kind of working on that TSS process and making sure that if a teacher refers a student for a concern, that it's a quick, efficient turnaround, and that they, essentially, what I'm trying to say is that you're funding what you say you're going to do in the handbook, if that makes sense. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, welcome up our students.
Soon to be student and alumna.
Going off the corny pia.
Yes. Okey-dokey. So, I thought I could start off just with kind of the recap of, at least, starting with my last day of school, which was pretty exciting. Per usual, we had the SAD presentation, and I think it was really cool. I also know that this year, we added an extra component of it, in addition to the keynote and the kind of car crash seminar, whatever you would call it.
Simulation.
Simulation. We, there was also a talk on kind of sexual assault, and I think what I found really cool about it is that a lot of it was just about, like, educating on, like, what actually is defined as sexual assault, and like, especially with, like, today, when there's, like, a bunch of talk with, like, sexual harassment and kind of different things like that. It's like, what is the difference between them, and kind of what are your options, especially going into college and such. She also talked a bit about, like, universities and really, like, got into detail on kind of options for students that aren't always described. So, I do think it was kind of a beneficiary thing to add, just because I think even if you know most of it, there were things that were like, oh, okay, that's, you know, a good thing to note, whether something happens to you or someone else you know in the future, then you have that sort of insight. I definitely thought it was cool, because I didn't even realize it, but I knew the keynote speaker from just him being around town and coming to Mad Maggie's and such. It was just kind of cool to see how, you know, things you don't always realize do, and there are people you don't realize that do have these issues that, you know, they've grown from. So, I thought that was kind of cool. And then there were senior finals last week. I was lucky enough to be one of the seniors that was able to have a good enough grade that it was able to count as a final. So, that was exciting. Yes. And then we started senior week this week, so that was also very exciting, very busy and exciting. On Sunday, we had the carnival, which is where we got our yearbooks and our cap and gowns. There was also a pocket constitution, so that was interesting. And it was kind of cool, because they had, like, cotton candy machines, popcorn, snow cones. They had a food truck, which was kind of cool. And everyone got a ticket, so you could get, like, whatever you wanted from the food truck, and they, like, loaded tater tots and stuff. It was cool. It was cool, yeah. And then we also, obviously, on Monday, had senior prom. I do know, I was very happy to be just a senior who got to not worry about going to school the next morning, because I was tired at the end of that night. I think Mechanics Hall was definitely a long bus ride, especially during rush hour, driving in the big buses, but it was very pretty once we got there. And I thought it actually ended up being, like, a really nice space, and I think everyone looked amazing, and the grand march was fun. So, that was really cool. I loved seeing, like, the posts afterwards.
It's also great pictures.
And hey, Jack was there, too, so.
It was pretty fun.
You look beautiful, Caitlin.
Thank you. And then, the next morning, we had Kimball Farm, which was definitely a cool thing, too. Didn't, like, it actually wasn't getting up early the next morning. It was, like, eleven, but it fell really early the next morning. But it was really cool. We, I actually have been to Kimball Farms before, but I always kind of did, like, mini golf, and they were like, oh, yeah, there's, like, a zip line and normal bumper cars and, like, a driving range. And I was like, where was that this whole time? So, it was really cool. It was really interesting, the way it worked. Our class officers and advisors kind of arranged something, so we got almost like this barbecue station for lunch, and then kind of unlimited sort of ice cream up until three, and they had, like, select flavors and stuff, so that was pretty cool. And then we got wristbands, which basically gave us, like, unlimited mini golf and bumper boats, the driving range, and just, it was really cool just to be able to walk around and do everything. So, at first, I was like, oh, wow, that's a lot of time at Kimball Farms, but I got to try everything, so that's always fun. And I got second in mini golf, so.
Nice.
Yeah. Not to brag or anything. And then, we had Lucky Strike just the other day, and I'd never been, so that was kind of cool. It's like, I expected it to be mostly bowling, but it was actually, I'd say, mostly, like, arcade sort of games. There were, I think, six bowling lanes, which definitely was, like, a little bit of, like, a competition to get them, but bust number one, so lucky timing. But I do think it was kind of cool, because I do know someone who, like, didn't get to go bowling right away, and they were able to ask for, they gave us game cards, so we didn't have to pay for the arcade games, and he was able to get a second one as well. So, I thought it was kind of cool that even if you were waiting for a little bit, you still could play more arcade games. And then they had pool and shuffleboard, which was kind of cool. And then.
So, it is for seniors.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Some of us are still in school.
And then additionally, that night, we had scholarship night, which was pretty cool. I thought it was kind of interesting, just, because going in, it was, like, stressful, because no one knew what they were getting. So, it was definitely, like, the whole time, everyone was just kind of like, so. But I think it was really cool. I think it's always exciting. Like, I know I was sitting next to one of my friends who got the NHS award, and she was not expecting that scholarship at all. So, just, it was really cool, just when people were, like, happily surprised, because they didn't think they had a shot. It was just like, oh, my god. So, I think it was painful but exciting with the not knowing. And then also, something I forgot to mention, but all throughout this week, we've been doing graduation practice. We've been practicing the march-walk procession. We're getting better.
Many times.
Yeah. I was like, this guy's leading it, so. It's hard to walk, but I imagine it's harder to keep and beat.
Yeah, definitely hurts the arm a lot, so.
And then today, we had awards day at the school. I think it was kind of cool, just to, you know, I've been there before, obviously, as a junior, I watched it, and it was just kind of cool to actually, like, know everyone who was winning the awards. It definitely made it kind of more interesting, and there were definitely some highlights.
Definitely some highlights, between, like, the Junior Book Awards, the Excellence in, like, Academic Sports and Extracurriculars for Seniors, and then, of course.
Most importantly, there was the amazing and impromptu solo performance by Mr. New Jim, where he performed a song in order to.
With a ukulele.
With a ukulele, in order to thank one of our faculty. So, Ms. Newman, and it was just really crazy. We got the entire auditorium to clap along, so, or gym, I should say. So, it was pretty cool, just liven people back up in the middle.
It was pretty awesome, although I didn't hear that ukulele playing much. Just missed the.
I heard, I heard the first.
I heard it. I heard it.
I think so, yeah.
I was like, it wasn't really an instrumental part of it. I think it was mostly just, like, a background strumming.
I think that the vocals were the most important.
Yeah. Yes. And then, obviously, tomorrow, we have graduation, so it should be very exciting. Nice weather, which is pretty exciting as of now, so it looks like it should be a pretty nice night. I know, I was talking to Mr. Jackson earlier, and I was like, you ready for the speech? And he's like, yep, I've been ready all week. So, I think everyone's rearing to go. And I know, I talked to, like, our salutatorian, who asked to give a speech, and she's, like, nervous, but she's like, I think it should be good. Just make sure to, like, cheer really loud, no matter what. So, I think it should be really great. And then, obviously, afterwards, we have SOS. I've been lucky enough to try to keep my ears closed, so it's all a surprise, but I know that they've been working really hard, and I know that the shirts ended up looking really awesome. We also got those at the carnival. I know that Emmy Chan ended up being announced the winner, and it was just really cool, just, you know, to see what one of my classmates created. I know that I had her in art class, and like, I knew she was super talented, but I was like, wow, it looks so awesome. So, it's definitely exciting to have tomorrow to kind of celebrate at SOS and just be surprised by what happens.
So, some of us are still in school and very jealous of the fun activities that the seniors have participated in. I had to go to school after prom, so that was, that was fun. I didn't get to go to Kimball Farm, but it's okay. In, at the high school, not at Kimball Farm or Assembly Hall or anything like that, we've been still trying to cruise through these next week and a half to get to the last day on June 19th. Almost there. So, today, to celebrate the, to celebrate the graduating seniors, National Honor Society put, like, the solo cups up on the fence, but they're not actually solo cups, I found out. They're actually, like, there's weird plastic things that fit in the holes, but that doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah. And it looks amazing. It came out, like, really awesome. I didn't realize how much work it takes to do that.
Yeah. I heard it took just a little while longer than expected.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was quite a process, but, um, yeah.
Only juniors, Caitlin.
Yeah, you know, they have time.
And also, since we're wrapping up the year, some end-of-the-year banquets are happening between student councils. Last week, I know track has their annual bank, end-of-year banquet on, it's this weekend. I don't know which day, because I'm not doing track. But although, like, these end-of-year banquets are happening, there's still plenty of sports teams still going strong. For example, the track team has New England's this weekend, and next weekend, I believe they have nationals. So, some athletes are definitely still training hard in that sport. Additionally, baseball won in the Super Eight last night, so that's a big, a big win for us.
And then, I'm sure some of you might have heard, but it was kind of, I remember one of my friends, we were on the bus coming home from, I think, probably Lucky Strike, when we saw the article that one of our seniors, Zbajon Keen, who happened to win Gatorade Player of the Year, also happened to be drafted by the Red Sox, so that's pretty exciting.
So, in addition to his win in the Super Eight, he was drafted by the Red Sox, so that's pretty cool.
There was softball game going on right now, too?
Yeah, yeah. There are some sports games going on now. Is there softball? Okay, yeah. I was gonna, I was gonna mention, I think girls lacrosse is also playing now and just ended. I don't, I don't know the scores on those. Okay.
Oh, nothing.
All right, yeah. I'm not sure about girls lacrosse either. I think they're playing right now. But also, boys tennis had their quarterfinal, quarterfinals game today. They won, so that's very exciting. I think it was against Wakefield. They won, I think it was four to one, I want to say. They were, they were getting ready to play as we were setting up the cups on the fence, so, yeah. Also, as this year's sports are starting to wrap up, some sports coaches are having meetings for next year's fall sports. I know cross-country had their meeting. Girls Swim and Dive is having their meeting. So, preparing for next year with next year's captains, getting ready for those, and looking forward to the 2019-2020 school year. Additionally, we got next year's schedules, too. Looking forward to next year. The junior class did at least rising seniors, and a lot of people are going into guidance, you know, switching, switching up some things, but it's good that we got those this week. And with these schedules coming out, AP class meetings for next year are happening between the AP Sciences. APUSH is having their meeting next week. And, yeah, so lots of preparation for next year. And then, one last fun thing that's happening, for those of us that are.
I was like, oh, then graduation, you know.
The annual outdoor coffee house will be at 5:30 PM on June 14th, next Friday. That's always, like, an awesome event that, that takes place in the courtyard, where student musicians perform and showcase their talents. They're all so talented, and the proceeds go to benefit the music department, so be sure to stop by. Yeah.
Yeah, busy, busy time ahead, but.
All fun.
That wraps up our student report.
Well, we want to thank you so much for your time and dedication throughout the year and coming and reporting on all these excellent activities. And as we say goodbye to Caitlin, we have a little card for you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yes, yes. Thank you. I'll make sure not to trip.
Thank you guys. Have a great summer.
Great job.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, with the approval of minutes from last meeting.
So, I'll move that we approve the minutes for the May 23rd, 2019 school committee meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Terese. Any discussion? Real call?
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye five oh. All right, on to our superintendent's report.
Ms. Marks has a brief vaping update, as well as talking about race and which we're rarely seeing about in Texas this weekend, so whatever.
So, just an update in terms of the vaping situation. We had, at the middle school, the Museum of Science came this Wednesday, and there was an assembly for each grade level presenting vaping information, health information for the students. So, that is something that has happened since the last school committee meeting, and we'll continue to work on addressing the health curriculum with the nurses and the new grant that we received. So, and Race Amity Day is this Sunday, so I invite all the community to come out for that. This is our second annual Race Amity Day. We had a proclamation made through the Board of Selectmen last year for the town of North Andover, and our students have decided to increase the event by one hour this year. So, it's from ten to one. So, there'll be all kinds of activities that celebrate the various cultures that we have here in North Andover, food, music, dance, lots of different things. So, it's a drop-in, so come when you can, and we enter through the courtyard. So, hope to see you there.
Where is it? High school?
At the high school, yes.
And there's, there's kids' activities, right?
Yes.
Do they get the passport?
We are going to do that. That's new this year, yes.
Yeah, it's a great activity. I participated last year. It was a lot of, really interesting, different activities, and a lot of luck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Should be good. And this is all student-driven. So, Mr. Sheehy, myself, help, help out where we can, but it really is ideas and organization by the students, so.
Great. Great event.
Mr. Mealy.
Doctor Mealy.
Doctor Mealy, thank you for the correction.
I can't say that.
Doctor Mealy, could you, you know, I know that the school committee may be aware, but could you, for the folks at home in the viewing audience, talk a little bit about the Fields Recreation Complex, and what's going on with that at this time?
Suzanne can do that, too.
Suzanne could talk.
Okay. If Town Council could address it.
Unfortunately, we need to have somebody talk about it.
Yes, and I'll just address the litigation piece.
Yeah, and I'll just say this. So, I just wanted to make it really clear. We had a really proactive meeting with all-town safety engineers, everybody involved in the project early this year. And I call it lessons learned from opening the Bradstreet, just in terms of traffic and the work being done. And we had some really solid plans, and some people may not know, because I don't think I've seen it in the press, it sounds like that most folks are expecting, even our teachers, you know, that construction and all that would stop right when school got out. So, if you could give us an update on that and how the litigations might impact that.
Right. So, I think Dr. Mealy could address the scheduling, and I'm not quite sure where the scheduling is, but I don't think it was intended ever to start construction right away, because we're still in the design phase. We'd have to have a design and go out to bid. But at this point, there's been two appeals filed in court. There's one, a butter, who filed an appeal in Land Court, appealing the special permit issued by the planning board, complaining about, in more general terms, about the project, about, as was heard in the public hearing, the artificial turf and the lighting. Those seem to be the main concerns. That has, we've had our first hearing in Land Court already. There's another hearing in Land Court scheduled for June 13th on a motion to dismiss that I filed against that case. And there's a second case that has been filed in Superior Court. And sixteen, basically, ten to twelve, sixteen people, individuals have filed the suit against the town on that, and that's with regard to the CPC, the Community Preservation Funding of the project. As you're aware, that for the past three years, I believe it has been, the town meeting has voted to support this project, so it's designed through the CPC money. At the last town meeting, there was a vote to support the construction, the design and construction of the project, and these sixteen taxpayers have filed that appeal in Superior Court, requesting the court to find that we, that the CPC funds cannot be used for this project. So, I have also filed a motion to dismiss in that case on the basis, on the basis that essentially, they don't, you know, their position and on the town's position is that they don't have any basis for their lawsuit. And so, typically, a motion to dismiss will be heard by the court and a decision issued within, I'll say, six months. That's, sometimes, the court, you know, there's always, when you leave something up to a judge, you don't really know the outcome. So, that's what we'll be waiting for, to hear about the outcome of that. So, that's the status now, that we're in the process of litigating those in two separate courts. And I know I'm meeting with a couple of the other boards and committees about this also, and I don't know if you have any update on the Fields Committee or any plans on that.
Right. So, that's all I would say, is that as a result of what's going on, construction's delayed, at the very least. And they had put a suspension of the use of the fields, anticipating. Um, and they had put a suspension of the use of the fields, anticipating construction to start. But they've lifted that now, um so the field will be back in use. Um, although part of the track is now gone because of the accident playground. And the baseball field is no longer available because of the parking lot uh that was put in. Um, but the other fields, we do have a need for fields across the town, uh will be available now that we have given back that land to the um town. It comes under the auspices of um the youth center, Rick Gorman, who will um decide on, on use. Uh, with still the same priorities though, school, um youth sports or, you know, community activities and then others. Um, so they're back in use.
So then the high school, middle school, whatever booster clubs would then work with him to use it for scheduling games, et cetera?
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, that's, that's one positive thing, I guess. I mean, as someone who's, you know, I have a son playing Little League, um and just seeing the, the challenges of getting field space, I know the, the chair knows how difficult it is to get, uh, get fields. Um, I just want to express my profound disappointment in the uh, the sixteen um people and others. It sounds like it's eight families who have filed suit. But um those fields um have had such a tremendous public support. The public process, the awareness, we've been dealing with this for at least three years now. I know Ms. Mabelly has been involved in so many meetings on it. Um, I think some of the arguments they've used are, are specious at best. And um it's just gonna put, put off for at least a year, the use of uh, of that field. It's just a, a great part of the town. I, I'm sure you're gonna be successful in the long run, Suzanne. But uh for those sixteen people who have decided to file suit against the town, um, just can't express my disappointment strongly enough. So. I hope we succeed and succeed quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, just a quick update. Um, the past couple of weeks, the past two weeks anyway, I've been invited to several retirement parties. Uh, the middle school had theirs the other day. I went with Doctor Mealy. Um, you know, I went to one for, each school kinda has their own today. I was at the country club briefly for Bobby Hedstrom at the Saja retiring. And I'll just say this much, um, I'm really happy for these folks. They've put in a lot of years. Um, I'm happy for them and I'm sad for us. I love getting new blood into the system. And there's nothing better than the staff that we've been bringing in. And we've been getting so many applicants and the, the ability to do summer training and all that. Um, but the skills in which these people have developed and the craft over the years, it's hard to replace. Um, so uh I just want to say congratulations. There's a bunch of them. Uh, there was a NADA banquet at the Stevens Estate for the whole entire district. But as I go to these others, I learn a little bit more than some of these folks um than I did before attending. And we'll miss them. Um, so congratulations to all the retirees. And then just two other things. Today I had the good fortune to go to the um, the English Language Learners, now known as English Learners, end of the year middle school family celebration, and it was awesome. Uh, families there, teachers there. Uh, I don't think a lot of people know, we have over thirty different languages here in North Andover. And um, anyone want to take a guess of the top five?
English?
English Language Learners, yeah, yeah. So uh, you know, they get support, um, because it's, English is not their first language.
Spanish.
Spanish is number one.
Vietnamese.
Vietnamese is number four.
Korean feud is awesome.
Chinese?
No.
No.
One strike.
One strike.
I s- I see one, so I'm cheating. Urdu? Is that what that says?
Yeah.
What is that?
Uh, it is Urdu. It's a Persianized, um, a Persianized standard of.
Like Farsi, a version of Farsi?
Of a Hindu uh language. So that's, that's at seven percent, tied with Vietnamese. Arabic's at eight percent. And then uh Portuguese is number two. We've had a big influx um of Brazilian Portuguese.
Brazil, yeah.
So it was just terrific. Um, I, you know, it was really dynamite to have parents in, engaged, and we had, we had a lot of fun. But I just, that's one thing people don't think a lot of, uh, in North Andover. They have over the thirty different languages. On our website, we have a pie chart, and it shows about twenty languages of who we serve. Those are kids who actually receive the services. But in addition to that, we have several other kids that have tested out or proficient at the, you know, English. Um, but that English is not their native language. So it's, it, it's pretty awesome.
Can I add a comment to that?
Yeah.
So um today we had the pleasure of meeting with um Anita Warden. If you all recall, she had donated um very generously to help fund, fund the foundations program for um primary literacy in grades, it, it eventually grades K through two. So we shared some of the data over the last three years with her to show, you know, how effective the program has been. But that was one of the questions she had for us was, what about our, our students who don't speak English and how does this impact them? So we had some really interesting conversation, and she shared some of her own history, being in schools, not speaking English. And so it um, it is a, an issue that more and more people are becoming aware of here in North Andover.
And just um, I'm looking forward to graduation, uh the scholarship night. I've seen some of, some of the school committee act, uh as well as the awards day today. You know, I, sometimes, you know, school year is so busy, you don't get a time to reflect about how special our kids are in terms of perseverance. Um, you know, the work they put in. They're pretty special. And when they finish with us, that, that end product and what they're going on to do, and that list of intentions, and the list of vocational training, and the list of kids going into the military. It's pretty exciting. I'm excited for tomorrow night, for them.
So a quick question, if I remember from the um list of intentions, I think it was roughly ninety-three percent that were going on either to some form of education, whether it be two or four year, or have the military as well.
Um, and obviously last night was scholarship night, which I was away on business. But do you know how much money was given out uh last night?
So last night, just in community awards that our kids applied for, that were given, it was two hundred thousand dollars. That did not include um the three dozen or so kids, maybe more, that stood up. Um, talking about the merit base money they got.
Right.
From the colleges in which they're attending. Um, and that did not include any type of scholarship for athletics, band. Uh, cause I saw, I know, I, I know of a few kids who.
Performing arts, yeah.
Money for music and some for sports, so.
They said it was the largest amount ever given in the scholarship night, two hundred thousand dollars. That was.
Wow.
And there were several new scholarships. It was amazing.
What I think is pretty amazing is um, a- and I don't remember exactly how long, but probably ten, twelve years ago, that was where they started. Um, it used to be kind of, you know, somebody got a scholarship, they just went down to guidance and kind of pick it, picked it up. And it's been part of the community. Um, and I think it has grown as a result of kind of hearing um personal stories. Um, and uh groups within the organization, uh within the community, like the merchants and, um, you know, who, you know, give, give a scholarship. And you know, I think our, our community obviously supports them. And you know, I'm just, I'm not meaning to pick on the merchants, but you know, like, I, I know that they're a group that has given scholarships. And um, I, I think that has helped to grow that. And I think that just really speaks volumes along with the Andover.
Yeah. And there were some really emotional ones uh last night, too. You know, some of our students, uh, some from medically fragile, some who have passed over time. And I mean, I, I had, they had four scholarships for four former students of mine last night. And I, I, I mean, I, I was crying. I, I never cry, unless I have allergies.
I cried throughout. From the minute it starts to the end, I cried.
Yeah, I mean, to have uh four former students, one who I was their track coach and uh, you know, he was the shot put relay state champion, still holds the record today. And then to have three students uh, you know, pass in car accidents. Um, and, and, you know, I think that's the interesting piece, is having the connection to those. And I really appreciate the families that come in, cause I, it's really hard for them. And some of them, it's really close. There are a couple of families that just had recent tragedies that were up there. And um, anything I can do, when I was working with the PIC folks, they were like, can you figure out, we have a scholarship that's been in place since like nineteen twenty-nine, but no one knows who it is anymore. So we did a little research and we were able to figure out. Not quite sure what the person who named it did, but her mom was a teacher here in North Andover. So. Um, the more we can get more of a history and maybe use Brian Sheehy and his team, we've talked about, you know, getting that information down for some of the older scholarships.
Right.
So, could, because they must be funded through, you know, endowed or however they do it. Just to kind of keep the stories alive, so.
Can I make one other comment? I was gonna say it later, but it's directly related to this. Um, one of the things that several of the presenters mentioned, because a lot of these scholarships involve pretty extensive applications, people tell their stories. And several of them said that they really wanted to commend the class of twenty nineteen for their community service vol- level. And they were really impressed and proud to um offer the scholarships because they were impressed to, with the amount of work um volunteer wise that this, the class was doing and had represented in their essays. So I thought that was important to share. That, that was really valuable statement that several of them made.
That's it, that's it for the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the chair's report of a few items. Um, first one is that our summer retreat date has been set by popular demand. We will meet on July twenty-third. And that's gonna be um probably an all-day meeting, eight to three or so, I think we're targeting. Um, we have a reminder that nominations for the Hall of Fame, the Educator Hall of Fame, are due June thirtieth. Amy, do you want to say anything? I know you've said it before. Do you want to say anything else?
Sure. So um, that is um led by the vice chair and um sets up a committee. We still are waiting for applications, so the committee's not formed yet. The, the, as, I can't remember the term, so it's not necessarily a committee, but a group, a, a review team. And I did reach out to the teachers' union and asked for them to give us one um name, and so that'll be coming through. And then it'll just go to the vice chair to, to build the rest of the committee, um, the, the group. For June thirtieth, to be able to make a recommendation in September for, I'm assuming, the celebration in October, like before. So, um.
And it's open to all former educators and administrators.
And administrators, yes. Um, and the policy is linked here. And June thirtieth is the deadline. So it's been open since April first. And um we'd love to have as many applications as we can to consider.
Ms. Mabelly, you'll be pleased to know, uh, that maybe some people are procrastinating, but there's been several retired um teachers have been into the office to see myself, Bev, Mr. Mealy, Doctor Mealy over on that side, uh, looking just for some basic dates um on some folks that have worked here. So I think you probably have some nominations coming.
Excellent. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you. Um, I have one note of congratulations to the NAMs, um champ, middle school championship track meet was last Saturday, and we had twelve school records broken.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Um, so it was an exciting day.
That's great.
Yep, the relays and individual events. So that was phenomenal. All right, superintendent evaluation. Um, we have all completed it. And.
Some on time.
Very similar. Some on time, yep. The ladies were on time. I'll just say that. And a day.
What was it due yesterday?
To Monday.
Um, so I don't know how we want to do this. Do we want to, we've, I've included all of our comments. Um, I don't know if anybody wants to verbally say anything for the people at home. Let me go around.
This is all linked to the agenda.
It is.
So I, I can go first. Um, I mean, I think, you know, ob- obviously, I, I don't know in the past if we've had our comments um be linked um to our names or initials or something. Um, but I do like the fact that, that it is there. Um, I feel like a couple of years ago, uh, it was a little bit more anonymous and, and that's why. Um, there's really nothing in here from my review that I don't think anybody has already shared with you, Doctor Gilligan. Um, I think you um have always a very uh open communication policy with all of us. Um, and you know, our ability to just talk about, you know, what's going on with things. Um, you know, and I, I know that I've mentioned this. I mean, we've had ten superintendents in probably the last twelve years or something. I mean, it's just really, you know, pretty high. Um, and, and transition's hard. I mean, I think it's really hard for the community. I think most people kind of knew and anticipated that you were most likely gonna become superintendent. And um, most people really relieved that, you know, kind of, it, it kind of came through. And um, I think you had um some great opportunities, you know, for six years, I think, to be assistant superintendent and really kind of grow um in, in those positions. Um, and I think you've done a really good job of not making assumptions. Um, and I think that that's really difficult to do, because not only have you worked here, you've lived here, you're raising your family here. Um, and you know, you have to be objective. Um, and you have to think about all of the children in this community. Um, and there's good scenarios and there's bad scenarios, and we've, we've talked about all of them tonight. So, or not all, but portions of them tonight. Um, so I think that that's been great. Um, I think that my marks on this um were probably lower than I might have thought of. Um, only because I think it was just a, a transition year for you as kind of that first year piece. Um, but I would question anybody in the state from a community perspective, going back ten or twenty years, to look at the number of things that have kind of happened in this community. Um, from the gas crisis, which was, I don't know, seven days into the school year. Way to go. Um, I mean, and, and just how well you led that and how um communicated you were with everybody. You know, police and fire and parents and, and town manager and all of that. And uh, you know, th- things throughout the, the winter and the fall, you know, with weather and all of that. I, I just think you've, you've done a great job with that. Um, I think next year, you know, is really a year where we're gonna start to really see, you know, continued kind of traction and just the momentum kind of go up. But I personally want to thank you. I know it's been uh not always the, the easiest of the years. And sometimes we're not maybe the easiest five uh to work with as well. But uh, but I think it's been great, and I, and I hope that you have uh really enjoyed uh your first year, uh, cause we're coming up on, I guess, yeah, really about, really about the timeline. So thank you. I really appreciate it, Caitlin.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew.
Just to, I guess, dovetail what Andrew said. I think um your first year was outstanding, great. And I appreciate all your effort. Um, I think I used the expression baptism by fire in one of my comments. Literally with Columbia gas, uh, figuratively with the, the Bradstreet School. Um, you inherited a project that um had a lot of challenges to it. And um you were not as involved as uh, I kind of wish you had been when you were assistant superintendent. But I thought you picked up the slack right away. Doubled a lot of challenges with the contractor, with the town, uh, with the teachers. Um, and I think we came up, you know, very, very well. I think we have a great building there and uh things moving forward. Dealing with the Columbia gas crisis, you know, the second week of school, uh, we had our first snow day that, that week, if I recall correctly. Um, so it's been a lot of, a lot of little hiccups that you've had, you've had to dealt, deal with, and you've dealt with them great. Um, really proud that I was uh, you know, very supportive in getting this job to start with. But uh, you know, I look forward, and, and just what, what Andrew said. I mean, your, your presence in the community, your visibility in the community. And people know that you're from town, that you care about this, this town so much. Um, very, very happy with our choice, and I'm looking forward to working with you going for uh next several years, hopefully.
Thank you, David.
Doctor Gilligan, this has been a lot of fun. Um, I'm really pleased, like the others are. Um, one of the things that's most impressed me um is that at every step that there were challenges, you said, this is okay because it gives us an opportunity to lead. And every time we lead in a, in a challenging situation, it strengthens our skills. Um, so that every situation that arises after that, we have a new set of skills, we have new set of experiences. Um, that's really super positive. Not once did I hear you say, um, or, or see you, um, you know, flustered and being like, oh, my gosh, I wish this would just stop. Um, so I'm really, I'm really pleased with all that. Um, there are places that we, you know, that I myself said that you made significant progress. I mean, for example, class size. We can't fully address that until we address our, our, our being hemmed in in buildings, um, or the way we're, you know, we're structured um at this point. So those are things that we're gonna have to work on. Um, super pleased with the way that you were able to um build and continue um new partnerships, um especially with the changing um town manager. That was a, that was a big change for us as a community. Um, and I don't think you missed a beat in dealing with that. Our finance committee has asked for more information and more presence, and you've, you know, you've showed up for all those things. Um, our, you know, the work that we're doing, you know, with all those partnerships. Um, and creating new groups that can address things, the vape group, the coalition, um, you know, really just hitting head on, the ADL. Um, so I really appreciate um all that you're doing, and I expect that we'll continue to um make forward progress.
Thank you, Ellen.
So everybody's taken all my favorite things to say, but I would echo all that. Um, a, a huge win for us, um, and why you certainly were an attractive candidate is because, you know, you already knew so many people and had relationships with your, your leadership team. Um, but you've still looked at that, as, as Mr. McDevitt said, objectively, and are looking at ways to grow and change the district going forward, to bring us forward, which is obviously what we always want to do and grow in new ways. Um, so while this was your first year, I think because of all the extra things that were never anticipated, um, we still are a little bit ahead because um you were able to pick up already fully aware. we still are a little bit ahead, because you were able to pick up already fully aware of what was existing today. It's great to have your one done, and the second year's always the hardest, so. But we have a lot to do, and I feel confident that because you do embrace challenge in a positive way and are always looking to grow, that we are poised to do a lot of important things that's coming here. So I look forward to you leading that.
So I a hundred percent agree with everything already been said, and I would just add a couple of things. One of the things that really struck me, and there wasn't an appropriate place on the evaluation to put it, so I put it under family and community engagement, even though it didn't, you know, exactly fit there. What struck me was how attuned you were to the community, and you answered every single email, especially during the gas crisis, especially during the A, B, C, C hiccups at the beginning of the year. You were texting me at eleven o'clock at night, you were calling me at eight o'clock in the morning on the weekend, and telling me, "Listen, I just talked to this parent, this parent just emailed, I'm going to get back to this parent." I know the public doesn't see all of that, but I saw all of that, and it just wowed me that you didn't have a weekend off for the first six weeks of school, because it was one thing after another. You know, Saturday, you're going around to all the schools, checking them out to make sure they're safe to return on Monday or Sunday, in the schools. So that was, there are a lot of people who would duck and cover, and you're the exact opposite of that. You're like, "You want to complain, I'll hear your complaint, I'll sit there, I'll call you right back." You've called every single person back that left you a message, and I think that speaks volumes of your character. The other thing I want to say is that you have a knack for assembling a great team. You had a great team to start, a part of which you built yourself, you know, in hiring Loreen to this position and Kristin Ando, some of it you inherited. But you also recognized when you can make that team better, and you've taken steps to do that. And a lot of other people would not upset the status quo. And you recognize when you can improve upon something that's already good, and I think that's highly important in a leader, and I appreciate that, so. As my first time being chair, working with you as a first-time superintendent, we both learned, I think, a lot from each other, and I think it was a really good working relationship, and I wouldn't have preferred anybody else to learn that with.
I'm humble, I'm honored. I would just say this much, I'm thankful for your support. As my coach, you've met him, Matt King, superintendent for forty years in Lexington, Wellesley, Lincoln, Sudbury, and Concord, Carlisle. He said, "I probably had about," typically, superintendents get about one challenge a year. And he said, "I think I had about four major ones this year." And without your support, and without your ability, without you empowering me to, you know, to have that opportunity to lead and use the team, I wouldn't have made it through. You know, this life, everything in life is timing, and, you know, I'm pretty fortunate to have the ability to lead here, because if Dr. Price stayed one more year, you know, with sixty-five openings in twenty locally, who knows? I mean, I love this community, but the opportunity to lead here is pretty special. I would say, Helen, I really embrace that when there are challenges, let's not hide from them, let's confront the reality, let's figure out what the problems are, and let's take the right steps. And it has to be about, you know, what's best for our kids. And I'd say, most importantly, the biggest job that I have is hiring and putting people in place. And I think, you know, with George, Loreen, Kristin Ando, the new Dr. Tiffany Goddard at the Bradstreet coming in, the opportunity to do some other things and restructure this office a bit, I'm really excited about the future. But certainly, as Andrew or one of you guys said, Holly, it's a team effort. You know, we divide and conquer, some days are busier than others. But without Loreen, and without Jim, and, you know, Dr. Straight's not here now, but without her and the other folks here in central office, I mean, we wouldn't be where we're at. And it's a pretty special group. I don't know many central offices anywhere in Massachusetts where almost every employee, the first nine days of school, was at that Bradstreet School. Didn't matter what your job was. You know, you might have been the humanities coordinator, and you were...
Directing traffic.
Opening lunchboxes, yeah.
You were not only opening lunchboxes, you were manning the door, because the lock was stuck because of the humidity, and we wanted a secure door. Or, you know, Jim Merrily or Carrie Wahlberg, you know, in a hundred-degree heat directing traffic. So it takes a team effort, this is a good community, but I really believe these opportunities to lead, you know, that's great, but not only does it help us develop our leadership skills, it makes us stronger as a team, it makes us stronger as a community. And this really, I mean, you know, we can tackle obstacles, and we can do things. And as I said when I interviewed at the middle school one day with a bunch of parents, and I'll end here, is that, you know, I said, "If you're going to have it," there's a lot of candidates that might come in here and promise that we're going to do this, this, this all at once, and I've seen superintendents trying to do it, it's not possible. You have to be really focused and strategic, it's a tight budget. But with these talented folks, we'll be able to present an updated strategic plan where we retire quite a few initiatives, not the objectives necessarily, but the initiatives, and have new ones to move us forward in a thoughtful way that's sustainable. And I'm really looking forward to great things here. And as we continue to build the team and continue to bring people in, I'm excited. I wouldn't want to work anywhere else. So the support of the school committee's been tremendous. And last but not least, I just have to say, I wouldn't survive without my wife. She, she's the director of guidance at Lawrence High School. And sometimes when I come home with an issue, you know, some of the things she's talking about, I think, oh, boy. You know, I kind of feel like about this big, I'm complaining about something, you know, for me personally, and some of the challenges that she faces, so it helps me put things in perspective. But she's really been supportive, I love her to death, and I'm just glad she can put up with me as an extrovert and her as an introvert, and also live in the community in which I work, you know, and where my son's a student, so. Thank you to her and the team, and I'd be remiss not to mention, the union's been terrific this year in working with us around some challenging issues. And the teachers in North Andover, they're the best. They go the extra mile for kids all the time, whether it was big classes, not big classes. You know, the way that, just Mrs. Broderick last night, the chairs that she got. Kittredge is the smallest school in the district, and has been for years, I mean, they have two of every class. But the chair, you know, when she went up to present the union award and the PTO Kittredge, you know, these people make a difference in kids' lives, and that's what it's about. It's about the connections that we make as adults with kids. And whether it's at the high school, middle school, elementary, the Bradstreet now, it's a pretty special place to work, so. I could go on and on, so I'm going to just stop there. I really appreciate the honest feedback, and I look forward to another good year. And I know that you reorganized tonight, so, you know, I thank all of you, but particularly, probably spent a lot of time on the phone with both of you, and I appreciate your support and the ability to talk things out, and I thought we worked as a really good team. And as I said, it kind of reminds me of being the principal when I was at Thompson. The PTO president was in the head of the school council, were really strong sounding boards for me, and then they change every year, and that's a, I've been talking to a person for a whole year more than I talk to my wife at home, I mean, because just the nature of the work we do is so involved, but to all of you, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, I appreciate it through, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, fundraising update from Andrew.
Sure, I'm going to just give a relatively quick update. I don't remember if we had an update prior to, at the last meeting or not, but we met, I think it might have been that day. And we will be meeting, our goal is for the thirteenth of June, so next Thursday. We are diving into a lot of just the data that's there, and it was really difficult to kind of go in and identify, you know, how that money was being spent because of how it was categorized in there. So we tried to put it in in their rugby shirts and uniforms, and just really trying to figure out what the kids were fundraising for and how we were allocating that. So the union is, or Lisa, is really kind of helping us to look at what that is. We also have a number of groups that aren't necessarily identified as being fundraisers, and we think that they are doing some fundraising, so we're kind of diving into that. And our goal with that, again, is really to make a recommendation for a consistent process for that. So I think initially, we wanted to see if we would have something done by the end of this year, and I don't think that we will, so hopefully we will, I know we won't, actually. So my goal would be, you know, that we'll get some more data, and then maybe we can talk a little bit more about it during the summer retreat on June, I'm sorry, July twenty-third, and then put a policy into, before the committee for recommendation, early part of the fall. So we'll kind of move forward with that. But, you know, I think really, as we start to look at teacher negotiations coming up and the contract that's there, some of the stipends and the coaching pieces that are there, we know that students are helping to fundraise for coaching positions, and we may want to take a look at that, so. That's it.
Thank you. I'm going to give a quick town manager search committee update. The essays that went out to, I think eighteen candidates have been returned, thirteen returned them, so five withdrew. And the committee will be meeting, we have the packets, and we're all reviewing that now, over the weekend. And we meet on Monday night, where we'll whittle that down to probably eight candidates or so to bring in for interviews on June twentieth. So we're doing interviews all day on June twentieth, at the end of which day, then we'll select our finalists to go forward to the Board of Selectmen on the twenty-fourth. Great, any questions?
Those interviews are just amongst yourselves, like they're not public interviews.
Correct, correct. The candidates don't become public until they're finalists.
That's what I thought.
The twenty-fourth.
Correct. They become public before the twenty-fourth.
Well, thank you again for serving on the committee, you got enough on your plate already, so thanks for pointing that as well.
My pleasure. It is. No, it is my pleasure. All right.
That is a critical piece to our, moving forward next year is having a new town manager, so. Thank you.
And it's nice to be the lone representative of the schools on that committee. Not, there's several people that support the schools, but it's nice to be the voice, like, let's remember the school in this question, or let's try to work this question into the interview, so.
Good, that's helpful.
All right, school committee organization. So it is our policy or our practice, it's not policy, it's our practice to rotate our officers each year, and we don't elect anybody as chair who is up for reelection in the coming year. So it's just a little background for the viewers at home, and we will start with a motion for a new chair.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to nominate David Trissey as the chair for the school committee for the coming year.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mabley, second invite, Ms. Picard, any discussion?
Is that because I was late?
Yes. You know what happens.
Yes, that is why.
All right, no discussion, we'll do a roll call. David? Do you accept?
Aye.
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 And aye, five-oh. And with that, I am glad to turn over my gavel.
Okay, just pressing it, because they have the same seats. First of all, thank you all for your vote of confidence, I appreciate it. Look forward to working with Greg and the team for the next year going forward. Next word of business would be to elect a vice chair. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to select Helen Picard as vice chair.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Mabley to elect Ms. Picard as vice chair, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, take a roll call, Ms. McDevitt?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Ms. Picard.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
Can she also be secretary?
Next word is to elect a clerk. Do I hear a motion to elect a clerk of the school committee for the next year?
So I will, we didn't have a long discussion, but I will make a motion to not select Ms. Mabley as clerk.
Is that because I'm female?
It's because you had such a short time. I second.
Because you attend all the meetings.
Yes, I do.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Lynch, given by Ms. Picard, to elect Ms. Mabley as clerk of the school committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Ms. Mabley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. McDevitt?
He said aye.
He said aye.
I said aye, yep.
Before I said aye, mistress says aye, so that's five-oh as well. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
I would, if I may? I did hear Ms. Lynch say that we don't elect someone who's up for reelection as chair. That's a very short-term practice, because just before we were elected, Ms. Lynch, Mr. Limpert was chair.
He was the vice chair.
He was the vice chair.
Oh, he was vice chair, and then we reshuffled. Thank you, that's helpful to me.
I think the issue is really, if someone chooses not to run for reelection or is defeated in March, you're going right into town meeting, and that chair has been involved in so many different things. And I think that's why historically, it's not set in stone, but it's just kind of been an unwritten policy. I think the board stuff kind of has the same.
I think it's a good practice, but I just thought, you know, that felt very definitive as an announcement that that's the way we do it, so it's not a policy, but it's a practice.
Right.
Right.
So I was actually going to make a note of that. So our policy, I think we may want to update it, because it reads to me that we're really having a meeting for the purpose of organization, and we tend to do it within a meeting. And so, I mean, like, according to the policy, right, we would have a special meeting, the longest-serving, certainly not the oldest, the longest-serving member.
Oh, you were supposed to start that, that's right.
Would have kind of done it, which is fine, it doesn't, I don't think it makes sense, really, that's just my personal thing. But I think, you know, we might want to put in, "It's recommended that somebody coming up for reelection, you know, because of these reasons may not be..." I'm not saying we have to do it, I would just say it might be something to consider in the policy, because, I don't know, Dr. Gilligan, I know reads old minutes, but it might have been that, you know, there was a very specific meeting for only reelection or election of school committee officers and not other business as well, so.
Yeah, there used to be a practice a long time ago to have a, on the, typically, it was a few, you may have been on the committee right before graduation, right after graduation, with a public meeting, just for the reorganization.
It says it right here in our first line, though, it's at its last regularly scheduled meeting in June.
Well, that's good, we're following the policy.
I'm happy to...
That was years ago.
I'm happy to refer this to our policy.
I think adding the recommendation...
So, anyway, we have bigger things to do, but anyway.
I agree with adding the recommendation.
Okay, going on to the whole business, second reading, physical restraint of student policy, JKA-A.
Ms. Egan?
Anything to do on this?
This is the second reading, so.
Second reading.
Right, this is the second reading of this policy, and if you recall, last meeting, this is, this policy has been included in the student handbook, and so this is really a codification of this policy into your policy manual, because we've had this a part of the handbook, it's been our, essentially, the school committee's policy by virtue of the fact that you approved the handbook each year. So this is more of a codification of this policy.
It was just outdated, the one that we have listed.
Right, so it's going to be replacing the one that's listed and including this one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt policy JKA-A update as listed in the packet, shown on the screen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mabley, second by Ms. Lynch. Any discussion or questions for town council? Hearing none, Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Ms. Mabley?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's five-oh. Thank you. Next word of business, second reading, vote on, excuse me, vote policy, JIKK, teen dating abuse prevention.
Right, so I, I'll just give you sort of a brief background on this one. If we recall, this issue's first come up when there was questions about whether the school committee's policies on sexual harassment and sexual assault and abuse were current and up to date. And we initially undertook a review. Each year, we review our school committee policies, and we also review the handbook to make sure that we are in compliance with all of the state and federal regulations. In this instance, we have, the policies in place are code of conduct, we have harassment, we have anti-hazing, anti-bullying, we have our Title IX policies, and we also have our basic civil rights and discrimination policies. So that's our overview of what we have as a school committee in terms of dealing with issues of student conduct with each other. And this, throughout the process of reviewing our policies, we have had a number of students come up and say, "Well, we want you to have specific policies that address the teen dating and abuse issues." And there were questions regarding whether or not the school was required to have those under the law. We reviewed that and explained to the students that we were not required to have this policy under the law because it's, the statute only requires it if there's a funding provision also. The state hasn't funded this particular statute and therefore the school committee is not required to have this policy in place. But in working with the students, they provided the Melrose School Policy and Procedures for Teen Dating Abuse and Prevention. And I met with committee member Mably and Picard and the students to discuss, sort of working with them and, you know, addressing their concerns about this issue. And they provided us with the Melrose Teen Dating Policy and Procedures and they also asked for some changes to the A B C D, which is addresses harassment. So we made those changes and we have in place, the school committee has in place, these overreaching policies that deal with conduct and deal with how these issues are investigated and the responsibilities and the repercussions for them. And so this particular policy is specifically to deal with teen dating abuse and prevention as opposed to the overreaching conduct that's encompassed with discrimination and sexual harassment and sexual assault, bullying and hazing. And I know there was a discussion at the last meeting as to whether or not this policy should be broader to include additional behavior that's prohibited and additional conduct. But this one was specifically asked for by the students to address teen dating abuse prevention. And so we have taken their sort of suggestions and worked to, to modify them to meet North Andover's needs. And I know that Ms. Mably and Dr. Gilligan have worked together to discuss and to add the language about the education that piece that is important for teen dating abuse prevention, incorporate that into curriculum, mainly dealing with healthy relationships. It's a part of our curriculum, the healthy relationships through the health program, and so that is a part of this policy also.
Thank you, Ms. Egan.
Uh, Mister Chair, can I ask one question?
Sure.
So, just make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, Ms. Egan, that with, without this, we are still totally covering these types of things, but we wanted to call it out explicitly because this is something the students have brought to us.
Yes, absolutely, because the, the, the overreaching policies we have in place right now handle this issue. This is a very specific, this is a very specific form of assault, discrimination and sort of criminal, just inappropriate behavior. And so it's a very specific form of that and that's what this is particularly meant to address. So we have our, we have our hazing, our harassment and our bullying, as I said before, and our discrimination and those are very, they're broad, but they're also specific because there's definitions included in those that encompass this behavior. But this is only to address that. And if there's, and this is also, and this is in response to the students that have been, you know, they've been coming to the school committee and they've been proposing certain policies. And so when we worked with them, we said, yes, we'll come up and we'll look at this and then, and we heard what they were saying and modified this for North Andover.
Any further questions?
So, the only thing I really don't like about this is that we're calling it teen dating abuse. And it's not, I mean, thi- this occurs outside of dating and I'm just, I, I don't want to be a wordsmith with this or, you know, really a stickler on it, but I don't know, that just bothers me.
Is that the language, is that the legislature used as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it, so this policy is specific, so I understand what you're saying and you're really, you're, I, I think what you're saying, I think I understand that. I think what you're saying that there's other forms of assaults and abuse that occur outside of the dating relationship.
Correct.
And that this policy doesn't address it because it doesn't define, that behavior isn't defined and encompassed in this policy?
Right, and, and it's in other policies, but to, to me, this is, I, I agree with what's here. I, I don't like how we're labeling it. That's my concern. I don't, I don't know a better way to describe it, though.
So there, so there is all sorts of behavior that can, that's similar to this type of behavior, right? This is sort of a teen dating abuse and violence is almost is the same as a, it's looked at in terms of a, obviously a partner type of abuse and violence, right?
Relationship.
Almost a domestic violence. What we typically think of a domestic violence type of abuse and behavior, but it's because it's an intimate relationship or a dating relationship and that's a specific type of relationship and abuse recognized under the law. And so the specific statute that is addressed by this policy is dealing with that type of abuse as defined under the law, which is different than your base, your other type, and I don't know if you're just thinking about sexual assault, but sexual assault in general. So there's sexual assault in general that you, there's laws about. And there's also specifically teen dating abuse which falls within the category of a domestic violence.
Okay.
Because there is, it's an intimate partner abuse and sexual, sexual abuse. And that's where this sort of stems from, out of that body of the law.
No, I know what you're saying.
Yeah. And that's why, and that's sort of why I went through my long, we have a history there. And I went through this long history about it, but I just wanted to make it clear that we do, you know, we can look at other policies that we have and I think it's linked, it's that A B C D.
Right, it is.
And it's all about sexual harassment and it's unwelcome, we, we did address that behavior in another policy. We said, what is sexual harassment? It's unwelcome sexual attention and unwelcome sexual advances in that definition of sexual harassment. And so that's specifically towards that, that issue. But that's not the same as the specific action of having the sexual abuse happen within that type of partner intimate relationship.
Okay.
One of the things that the students asked when we met and when they came to us was for specific consequences. And, and this says that we'll take necessary steps or appropriate consequences or, or something. It's my understanding that our policies don't outline specific consequences, that that's a handbook issue and that's an implementation issue and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
Right, so, and that's a very good point to bring up because what the school committee's role is, is to look at the policies and not the implementation of the policies, right? You don't define the specific punishment for each infraction or each violation that a student commits. That's a, that's the policy and the measures that are part of the student handbook and the administration. So that's with the principals and the superintendent, they deal with those issues. That's not for the school committee to do. Your, your role is to set the policy and really, that's part of what we were working with the students on to have them understand that you do have a certain role here and you're, you're responding, you're hearing what they're saying and you're responding by adopting policies, but the implementation and the specific repercussions for this type of behavior and also the specific procedure that's allowed under the law and required under the law, that's all something that's done within the administration and not here at this level. Because that, that type of behavior and activity and infractions and abuse doesn't even come to the school committee. Because that's not your role.
Right.
So you don't have any knowledge of any incidents that happen, you don't involve in that at all because that's not your role. And that's by statute, right? The school committee has certain authority under the statute. You're just not even, you don't have the authority to become involved in student behavior. You don't even have for student records and reports, that's not something that you're privy to.
Thank you.
I'm glad you made that point, yeah. I mean, I think, we, we all know that, but it's nice for the public to understand that.
I think that's important. I think, as you know, the handbook's brought each year with the changes Suzanne does. Council has to work on that extensively to make sure that any of the procedures or practices or the operational, the oper-
Operationalization?
Operationalizing it, because it has to match up, so we're meeting all the laws, regardless of state and any statute. Because most of the handbook also referred back to and matched to the law.
Absolutely. And I, the other thing I would like to say is that one of the, one of the things that we did in coming up with this policy is we looked at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and their guidelines on teen dating violence and abuse. And the, this language is a part of that. We have incorporated some of that from there and the, so we've looked at all of that and we've looked at those guidelines and we've made sure that everything is compliant with the law in terms of that.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Uh, I will move that we, sorry. I will move that we approve as presented in the packet policy J I C K teen dating abuse prevention.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDevitt, second by Ms. Lynch. Any further discussion?
Mister Trissey?
Yes.
I asked last time that we consider removing the word teen from it because there are students that begin dating before they're teens and we have students in the district until they're twenty-two years old. So I would rather that this said dating abuse prevention rather than teen dating abuse prevention. So I would.
Strike every word that says, every time it says teen and just strike it?
Yep. Do you need a motion for that?
Can we contemplate that for a second?
Of course.
And I, I don't know if there's any ramifications.
Yeah, would that over-include, like, including, that would apply to staff then, would it?
Student?
Student dating abuse, yeah.
Strike teen and replace teen with the word student.
For youth.
Well, youth has the same issue.
Youth is the same as teen, right.
So it's the teen. Attorney, I'm not gonna put you on the spot right away, but if you want to jump in any time, feel free.
Sorry, so I was thinking, could you bring it up again, do you mind? So the only thing I was thinking is that this is, um, so if, if we take a step back a little bit and we think about what we're doing is, what you're doing is you're adopting a policy and the policy is specific to the statute and to, to the behavior.
Understood.
And what we're doing is we're defining behavior.
Right.
And we're defining the type of behavior that, that is, you know, that you're prohibiting and that you're, you're making sure that you make a statement about in your policy manual. So whether it says teen or it doesn't say teen and whether there are students that are not teens but are engaged in this behavior, I, I don't think that's going to mean that you don't have a policy that affects those students. And the law states it's a teen dating abuse prevention, that's what thirty-seven states.
This is the language of the statute, so this is the language we should be using.
Yeah.
I get that. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Well, we'll take it though, Ms. Picard.
I, I wanted to just make one other mention. I, I think one of the reasons why I really like that we're looking to add this is something with young people in new relationships, these types of relationships, for them to realize that things are still not okay even though you've agreed to a relationship, it doesn't mean that certain behaviors are, are okay because, well, that's my boyfriend or girlfriend, so I don't really like that, but we're in a relationship, so this is okay. I mean, I think calling this sort of thing out is really important as an educational point for people that this type of relationship abuse is not acceptable on any level. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, seconded as well. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Picard?
Aye.
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 I vote aye as well. Five oh vote as well. Thank you. I think Attorney, thank you for your cooperation today. I think you're dismissed.
Oh, she can stay.
I don't know if you want her to stay, obviously. Is there anything else that? Alright, moving on. Next business is FY twenty budget status report, Doctor Emili.
So, last status report of this fiscal year, it hasn't changed. In the last few months, we've been projecting to finish a, a little bit in a deficit and mainly because of the two factors we've identified, out of district, unanticipated expenses and the new school. And so that's stayed true for, from pretty much the start of the year through the year. And you can see from the budget report that's attached, we're getting ready to close out the year.
Any questions, Doctor Emili?
No, I mean, I think the only thing I would say is, you know, I don't even know, probably about five, six years ago, you know, kind of get close to the end of the year and was a little bit of a surprise that, you know, where we were. But I mean, I think we've known this really, I don't know, October?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
So I mean, I appreciate, you know, kind of the, the monthly updates continuing, especially, you know, if we are looking towards tapping into stabilization. I think people are aware of what's happening and, and there isn't a knee-jerk reaction to it, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, but, um, team discussion of the school and calendar survey.
This came up, I think, in the winter saying, when we were looking at calendar decisions, saying that if we ever needed input to consider anything different, we would need to have gathered public input way before January. So I think the idea was to try to do a survey.
Right.
In the fall so that we could be informed if we wanted to propose anything different. That's my recollection.
So we're gonna put this back in the field?
Well, I think we want to revise it a little bit.
Yes.
I, I mean, I, I can tell you, this was, what was it, six years ago, five years ago?
I think it's two thousand fifteen somewhere.
Two thousand fifteen?
Two thousand, actually, it was the beginning, two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen, right.
Okay, okay. Um, I mean, I remember doing this and, and at the time, I mean, we were, year after year, really hitting, you know, June twenty-eighth, June twenty-ninth, June thirtieth. And, you know, everybody was trying to be as creative as possible, right? You know, like, let's go back before Labor Day, let's, you know, consolidate down to March. I haven't heard that, especially with the implementation of beyond the classrooms, which we didn't have to go to this year, thankfully. So I, I'm not opposed to kind of putting it out there again, but I think we're gonna get some very different results. I think because, which is okay, absolutely, because of the changes that we've made. So I, I don't know how to word it, but I think we should, you know, ask basically our people. But maybe the first one is, like, are you happy with where we are today? And I'm not saying that's the end of the question, but, you know, I mean, in reality, you know, I haven't heard this.
I have heard a fair amount of people that still don't like the two vacations.
Okay.
But I think that that's something that's hard to get around and everybody else in Massachusetts does the two vacations.
I, I would just say a couple of things on it. I think if there's going to be a move in the Commonwealth or a move for a district to go to a March vacation, I think everyone's gonna have to hold hands and jump into the pool together.
Yes.
I would caution, two things. One is that the MCAS schedule is based, you know, during that time block and would have to take a look at that. But more importantly, we only pick up three days.
Right.
In aggregate, a total of three days because of the two Monday holidays, yeah. The two Monday holidays, so you'd pick up three. And just one other point, the, the teachers going back before Labor Day, which they have done for professional development, that's virtually or, in reality, it's about, it's the same as kids going back because if the teachers didn't go back at that time, and we say we had kids those days, which we used to do, the PD then would be throughout the course of the year, would have a day, you know, a full PD day in the middle of the year here in the fall, one in the spring. Just a point.
So the only difference between the picking up three days that I see is that two of those days are holidays when parents would be off, most likely to. So it just be, it makes it easier for parents who work full-time to manage one week instead of two because they probably have those days off anyway.
Or would it be a, a two-week vacation in, in March?
Not with MCAS. It's just not possible.
That's what private schools do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember looking at some of the data for this and not really realizing it at the time, but a large number of, one, teachers in this community have children in other communities, so that certainly was a factor. But a large number of families whose parents may be divorced, you know, one parent has one of the vacation and the other. And so there, there was a pretty good nu- And so there, there was a pretty good number, Dr. Gilligan, you might remember, who said like, I'm gonna have to renegotiate my divorce settlement or, you know, an update agreement in terms of custody. And, and I think that that is something that we need to be very cautious of. But I, I, in my opinion, we're not doing this unless the state is doing this. And we're moving MCAS and all of the other corresponding pieces to that. But I'd be open to hearing, of course, what the community thinks.
I think, you know, I just, I would just add that one other thing. I think if, even if it was more like a, you know, Eastern Mass or the North Shore or some, some other places were willing to do it, would be great. And I, I'm a working parent, my wife's a working parent, I totally understand that piece. But you're right, I mean, as, as a form of principle, I had a whole binder of, is it family probate or family court? Of agreements that, you know, because of dismissal plans and, you know, oftentimes it was, it dealt with, I'd be looking for the weekday stuff, like every other Wednesday someone would pick up.
Right, right.
In the weekends, you know, it'd be dropped off by someone else. But there were, yeah, the binder was very fairly thick and I didn't even think of that, Andrew. That's a thoughtful point. That those vacations are all negotiated in that and they're very specific.
Oh, yes.
Well, if we were to, so if we were to do a survey, one question would theoretically be about these vacations, what other things would we wanna know?
The problem though, I mean, I don't wanna put questions in the field that have no chance of.
Right, right. That's why I'm wondering, are there any other things we'd be asking about?
So are, are we, are we like searching for a problem? I mean, I think things have been pretty, pretty good this year. I haven't heard a lot of bad, I understand your point exactly, but we can't do that alone.
Correct.
If I can jump in, I, I'm actually really against doing a calendar survey at this point. It didn't come up in the entry survey, where we had eleven hundred people who had an opportunity to say what they were concerned about. It came up in how many of those?
I don't think any, I'd have to go back.
Mostly zero. I mean.
I think, I didn't hear it at all.
Okay, so, I mean, so it didn't come up there. We're hemmed in by the teacher contract, we're hemmed in by MCAS. We haven't had an opportunity for beyond the classroom to, to do its thing. We've now made a solid end date for the year, kinda like in a no matter what situation. We've addressed a lot of those things. Again, the, we're talking about the April and February vacation as not being a North Andover decision or a decision just from however many people who happened to respond to the survey. It won't be our whole community. So I, I don't see that we're gonna gain any useful information. It concerns me that some of the questions in here were majority of people who were having an influence on the experience of a minority. So when we're talking about the religious holidays, of course, most of North Andover doesn't celebrate a particular religious holiday. And so we didn't have a ground swell of people saying like, let's make sure that we keep that, keep those religious holidays. So I, I think the thing that I hear most is people saying that they'd like to change the way we do early release for professional development. And what we've said here as a district and what I've heard from our administration is the reason we do it that way is that is how we can have an impact on teaching and learning. So I, I don't see a point of having, you know, this kind of a survey.
I would just say the, the complaint I've heard most, whether it was documented or not, but over the years is, you jogged my memory, is the end of the year. The people that have, they have to get kids into a camp and there's limited spots and they have to pay. And they're trying to plan for that. And then there's all sorts of activities that no one would even think of. You know, it could be Irish step dancing, it could be, there's all sorts of camps and different like crazy things all over. Where I know as an elementary principal, Lorraine could probably speak to it too, like kids would pull their kids, you know, the last week of school because.
They were leaving.
You know, one year we went to like the last day of June.
We did.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where I heard the most complaints. Or we have a lot of kids that just take Brook School Day Camp. It's probably one of the most popular, a lot of our kids are consoles in training and a lot of our kids work there.
Right.
And I don't know how they do it, but they always seem to be like, in the past, we go a week into their first week of camp.
Right.
That's all the camps. So I, I think Ms. McCarron makes a lot of good points. I think we should probably pump the brakes on this and let's just keep our ears open over the next, you know, few weeks and we can always, you know, take it up, talk about in July if we need to. People okay with that?
I, I'm okay with that because I think we've made some really good steps and we're not hearing it. And we're not hearing from people, you know, that they're concerned about it. And honestly, I think most people really appreciate that, that knowing that end date is there.
Yes.
The one thing that just kinda caught my attention a little bit, you know, and I, I actually had written down, you know, early release and how we do that today. So I'm just curious and it's really a question for you, Mrs. Mark. You know, in, in terms of what we do for that and what maybe our faculty and, and teachers and, and other staff members, are there things that they need? Are there, like, have we ever done a survey with them about, I mean, I think we, I don't know, past two to three years, there's been so much new curriculum, right? You know, Eureka Math and Lucy Coggins. So there's been a lot of things that we have had to deliver in order to make sure, you know, that, that they're providing, you know, consistent North Andover education. But maybe we're at the point where some of the input from our faculty can help guide some of that PD. I, I don't know.
We, we actually do get input from the faculty, so when, when we started with any of those programs and obviously I was mostly involved with the literacy pieces, so we did trainings with literacy where we brought in staff developers from Columbia Teachers College. Then those teachers that couldn't participate and we are actually replicating that again this year. We ourselves did a training for, so for the writing, we had a whole two weeks of training, two and a half days for teachers. And we split it with reading, so we weren't covering massive numbers of subs here and subs there. It was quite an undertaking. Now we are looking at rolling out the K through two reading units of study, so that will be part of the curriculum next year. We have sat down with all of the teachers, our coaching staff went out in their last round of coaching this year was to go over the scope and sequence document that we developed, so that goes week by week for next school year, for foundations, for writing, for K through two reading, for the Eureka Math. We have science in there which is a, a little looser. History standards are changing, so we're working on those right now. And one of our goals for next year is to have all of our, the, the music, art, PE, health curriculum adapted into that as well. So once we did the major training, sort of the underpinnings that everybody had to have, a lot of our two-hour days then were based on teacher input and choice. So teachers were able to sign up, so we would send out a document ahead of time saying, these are the offerings, sign up for what you're interested in. So we tried to, it wasn't one-size-fits-all anymore once we had that, that major training. And a lot of that was based on input from teachers, the coaching sessions, the collaboration sessions, what were teachers looking for. We also, last year, started offering additional PD on top of any of those types of things. So I don't know if you remember last year, we, it was the first time we presented a summer PD document.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So tomorrow, we're looking at the numbers for who signed up for what sessions and what's gonna run for the summer. We offered one in the spring as well. And again, I can speak to literacy in particular. One of our coaches is, did a session after school that people signed up for. The teachers requested the next session for that and now a third session for that. So a lot of that is based on teacher input and teacher interest.
Great.
There are a variety of ways, you know, we want it, there are messages we want everybody to hear. So that's very cohesive. And then we go into, you know, okay, this is what you're struggling with or what you're interested in knowing more about.
Sure.
Into those and then additionally after school and summer sessions.
Awesome.
I think one thing that could be helpful is to have some communication with us and with families about what's happening when it's building-based PD. We hear quite a bit about what you plan as PD at the, you know, the district-based PD. But with the building-based PD, there's not that much information and, and there's a perception that that time may not be fully utilized. And I think that's a perception we could, you know.
Dispel easily.
You know, we could clarify, you know, what's happening. So people would value that time.
Yeah. I would just add, so things in life ebb and flow. And this has been the lifeblood of how we've improved, particularly from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, we didn't have a penny for curriculum resources, not a dime. And schools present out on X, just on an MCAS measure, everyone improved consecutively. No one went behind for four, three years. And we went as far as we could for free with collaboration. But this has been pretty awesome in the sense of, we put this in because at the time, working parents were saying they were struggling with the half-day once a month. We did nine half-days for PD instead of this. So, you know, it's different challenges, but it's something to think about. But we could certainly communicate more. We usually do once a year, like, what do we do on these things?
I think that maybe that'd be a different topic for a different. We can bring that up, a question about it, I think it's important to hear about it. First reading of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty student handbook. I think that's in front of everybody. Just the first reading. Any questions or concerns to raise right now before we vote on it next time?
This is the part Suzanne should have stayed for.
Yeah. So the new policies that we've just put in, were those?
No.
No, so we have to add J I C K. The other one, I think, J K A A was just an update, was already in here, actually. But this new one we just did about the teen dating violence would need to be added.
So to, just clarify this, I mean, this is our first reading. Are we anticipating voting on this on July twenty-third?
I would think so, if you have the hands before I would say.
Okay. So the only thing that I would say on that, for good or for bad, you know, that it is a little bit of a working session that we tend to do, which in the past has not been televised. So we may want to have some portion of it be televised or recorded, so our discussion on.
This.
Handbook is available to people. And that will also be during the day, which makes it harder for people to attend if they wish to. So I have no problem with it, I just think we need to be mindful of our working community.
Right.
Do you think that there's any reason that we would wanna suspend the rules and vote on this tonight?
I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight.
Good.
So.
No. Well, I know what Attorney Egan had said is all the changes that are in here, she had made based on the updates of, of anything that we adopted other than the one we adopted today. And.
Input from the principals.
Input from the principals as well, in yellow. So, um, and she said all of this makes everything, us in compliance with everything. But, so that's as far as she's gone. And so as far as she's concerned, it's ready. But we need to, I mean, it would be good to know what we need to discuss and consider.
Well, we have six weeks for our next meeting, so I think that should give everyone plenty of time to get input and questions to the chair.
Yep.
And we can get them Suzanne ahead of time.
Right. I, I think we don't wanna wait till exactly what Ms. McDebitz is saying. We don't wanna wait to think about it on, on that day. We have to really give it some thought and.
Yeah, I know, because that, that really, towards that port of the summer, you know, we used to have that May thirtieth date to produce them.
Right.
But it, it, this has to go out, so people sign, everyone signs off on them.
Electronically though, goes out, we publish electronically.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the point I have in the first reading is the public is unnoticed, that this is on our radar.
Right.
We're all unnoticed that we're gonna take this up on July twenty-third.
Right.
And like I said, if people have suggestions, changes, concerns, you know, get them to myself or Greg ahead of time and get them to Suzanne, or you could email Suzanne directly.
Right. I, I know, I personally have asked her some questions about some of this, but.
We got an email tonight already about it, so.
Okay. Anything else on that? First reading, nature's classroom overnight trip. This is standard operating procedure.
It, it is, yep.
I wonder if we need to vote to suspend the rules because, actually deposits for this are due tomorrow.
Anything else, Mrs., uh, Dr. Gilligan?
It's something that I know we looked really hard at because of the year we had a lot of trouble. I forget, was it the ice storm? It was.
Two years in a row.
Two years, we had a snowstorm or something.
We had a snowstorm. There was one place where we needed a nurse and the nurse couldn't show up. We literally, I remember, kids went all over different places and different times.
Three different.
Mr. Me, Dr. Mealy went. I'd just say this, we took a hard look at it and we're, and we're wondering, you know, if this is something that we wanted to continue as a result of some of that logistical challenges. And I believe, and you guys, you know, I stand to be correct, the, it was the middle school staff and the administration overwhelmingly wanted to continue.
Well, not only the staff, but the students, the testimonials were overwhelming and powerful. That they wanted to, that they thought they really benefited from this trip.
Well, that, that was good to my question.
Deposits due tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Current seventh graders.
But it's fully refundable? Is that what it says? Full refunds available?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Well, that was my, gonna be my question too.
You wouldn't know that, that's in the notice that went.
If you didn't have a seventh grader, you wouldn't get that notice.
Five years too early.
Just you wait.
Yeah, one of the questions I have it.
So is there, I'm sorry, is there a need to suspend the rules unless Dr. Gilligan wants to, to take this up tonight?
I believe so, and that's, you know, we've been working hard on that and I don't think we've done that for any trip recently, so. But it appears that Mr. Goncalves probably needs this information before the end of school. Yeah, probably by tomorrow.
So there's, it's blank where it says, how is the trip funded and what is the cost of the trip?
I have that information.
It's three forty-two.
Sounds like, yeah, it's three forty-two.
Parents.
It's funded by families?
Yes.
Three forty-two?
Yeah.
Three forty-two dollars per kid?
Yes. And we have funds if they.
Yes.
Scholarships available, whatever.
Yep.
Just gonna ask, why, why do they need the money this soon in advance? Just if anyone knows that question, if you don't, that's fine too. It's a long time in advance.
I, I don't think they're paying full.
Just fifty dollars.
It's a fifty-dollar deposit, yeah.
To, to basically score the site for the.
Right.
It's securing the dates because this is a really popular program all over Massachusetts.
Well, is, is the pleasure of the committee to suspend the rules and take this up tonight?
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules to vote on this tonight.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. May, please, second by Ms. McDebitz to suspend the rules and take up this issue tonight. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Ms. McCarron?
Aye.
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 Aye. So suspend the rules and take it up. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the trip as presented in the packet now.
So moved.
Second, Ms. McCarron, second by Mr. McDebitz. Any further discussion, any questions, concerns that you need answered?
I was just really, if I can.
Sure.
Really happy that they did a thorough review of it, 'cause I know that there had been a lot of questions and so I'm happy to hear that it was overwhelmingly supported to continue. That was gonna be my big question tonight, so thank you.
And I would say, I think just going forward, Dr. Gilligan, if you can tell the principals, the teachers, I, I prefer not to suspend the rules going forward on stuff like this. But I understand we've done this, this trip I know of, we've done it for the last, um, teen year or so. I'm okay dealing with this one, but if it was a different situation, I want to be comfortable with it, so. So motion on the floor, motion seconded, Ms. McCarron. I'm sorry, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, just one comment.
Sure.
I'm glad to see that they are continuing to offer something at the school for those families who are not comfortable with their kids going away or that there's some reason that those kids can't go away. So I think that's really important. I've heard, you know, from families that that's really important to them, so I'm pleased to see that. And I would encourage that it continued to be robust. I mean, it looked like it was really good.
Yeah, I, I, great points. I mean, some kids, what they did back at school and the activities they did, I think it was Mr. McGrady that might have kinda coordinated and headed that up. It was pretty amazing, particularly with the history stuff in North Andover, hiking in Wire Hill and some nature stuff and then activities back at school, so.
And I'm just gonna make a quick point. I think that part of the reason why this may be coming to us at this point is, and I could be wrong, but I think this past year, all of the students went the same week. And I think, there was one year they all went the same week and it really kind of left a void in the middle school. And the students who stayed behind were kind of there. So having it staggered, I think, was the request of the staff. And so we used to go to three different places. There was a, one in Maine, New Hampshire, and then Western Mass, if I believe.
Connecticut.
Or Connecticut or something. And so I, I think it may have been also a logistics, Mr. Teresi, about getting three consecutive. So I don't know if that's it, but I, I would say.
Makes sense.
Logical.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussions? Ms. McCarron?
Aye.
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 Aye. Hawaii, bavo.
Could've abstained, but. He actually thought of that, yeah.
That your students.
I'm still Jack Loyal.
Tell us how they liked it after, 'cause I'm gonna have one coming after you guys.
Matt loved it, so.
You know, we never bring the kids in to discuss this, maybe we should do that at a future meeting.
Have the.
Mr. Goncalves would be more than happy to do it, I know.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Discussion of possible vote of FY twenty salary increases for school department non-unit personnel. Is that Dr. Mealy or Dr. Gilligan?
Someone has a motion.
We all do.
What, the motion on the floor first then discussed?
Yes.
Good, Ms. May, please.
I move that the committee approve an amount to be paid in the salary increases from the fiscal year twenty budget total.
I move that the committee approve an amount to be paid in the salary increases from the fiscal year twenty, budget totaling approximately two percent in the aggregate, not to exceed five percent for any one person, calculated as if such increases will occur on July 1st, 2019. The total increases will not exceed seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents in the aggregate, previously budgeted as part of the fiscal twenty budget process, to be divided among thirty principals and other district-wide employees as determined by the superintendent.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Maybley, second by Ms. Lynch, can we get a little clarification on what all that meant for the public?
Certainly. In terms of what was appropriated in the budget for FY twenty for administration, was the particular amount of, and I don't, was it seventy-two?
Seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and two cents.
Yeah, so it's been a practice here, Mr. Teresi, different than, you know, many superintendents ago, that the administrators have typically taken, had a percent raise in line with what the teachers have. Mr. Mealy?
That's correct, for quite a few years now.
Dr. Mealy, come on.
Dr. Mealy.
I think we should just go with Jim. For quite a few years now, the non-union increases have matched with some exceptions. And that's kind of the leeway that the superintendent gets, because it could be a new contractor here. And just looking at some positions, they may have fallen behind, and it's an opportunity to catch back up with equivalent positions. But I can say that what is going forward right now, ninety-five or more than ninety-five percent of the non-union employees are getting a two percent raise, just like all of the other employees. And even with that though, with some changes in positions that have occurred, we had seventy-two thousand available for increases. Right now, we're only projecting to use thirty-two thousand of that. So instead of a two percent increase in non-union salaries, it's about point nine percent, so a little under one percent is what's pretty projected right now.
So this, this includes thirty people that are not in any collective bargaining unit? And that's how that distributes, at your discretion, within those guidelines?
Yeah, I think it's important to know that, I'm gonna have to give Dr. Jim Mealy credit for this. Years ago, he put together, you know, a baseline or a framework, an overlay of what steps should look like compared to comparable districts, all those different things. So that would have a better sense, you know, maybe up until six years ago or so, every non-union personnel was negotiating individual contracts. So you'd see some things get out of whack, some things in line. And, you know, when we put the five percent in, because we have people in different things, and we want it to be equitable. We don't want it to be, you know, two people doing the same job. And we also wanna, you know, pay people and be competitive based on their experience too. So I think there's a lot that goes into it, but I give Jim credit, he put together a spreadsheet for us that we use in central office. It gives us a framework of, if you're a director, a principal, all those different components.
So that was made by Ms. Maybley, who seconded that? Ms. Lynch, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Ms. Maybley?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
Me, yes, Hawaii, just gonna call five-oh Hawaii for now, how's that sound?
Not good.
Okay, last item this time, annual review of student activities account, that's gotta be Dr. Mealy.
It's definitely me. So last but not least, as a result of the, we're due to have an audit done on our student activity account, it'll be three years. That'll be this fall again, but the one that was done in 2016 had recommended that you annually have the school committee approve the existing student activity accounts. And so I provided a list in the packet, we have weeded out. The biggest offenders usually are the former class, they're required to decide what they're going to do with any remaining funds in their class account. Traditionally, they have it turned over to the treasurer of that class so that there's funds available for future reunions or whatever they might wanna do. So we've removed those, and other activities that may have been enacted for three years or so, we've removed as well. So we're asking you to just approve the list for the coming year. And, and this can change, I mean, we, we move some that we may find out actually do need to still exist, and we would come back for approval. Or there could be some that get approved that when the auditor comes in, they might say that, that should be really, you could combine these two into this one, or whatever it might be. So it could change, but this is just to move into the next year.
And the current balances are as of like, right, this month of May or whatever?
Yeah, they, they change pretty quickly, especially the class.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the eighth grade is gonna be down to zero, I'm sure, in the next.
In a minute.
Class of 2019 typically.
Exactly.
Yearbooks, I'm sure they just paid them, so, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the rule?
This is the first reading, isn't it?
Yeah, first reading.
Any other questions for Dr. Mealy? Hearing none, public comment? Any public comment from the board, anything you wanna add?
I don't think so, it's, I mean, it's been great, like the, going to the, to the event last night and hearing from the students, it's really been a very good year. Despite our challenges, we've had a really good year.
Thank you, Ms. May.
I'd like to thank Ms. Lynch for her services chair this year for her first time. And Dr. Gilligan, congratulations on coming to the end of your first year.
Got eleven days or so, I think so.
Yeah, and then we look forward to a lot of excitement and a lot to be done in the coming year.
I just wanna thank all of you, you, you've shown a lot of support throughout the year, always texting me, asking me if I'm okay, and, you know, complimenting me on how I handled something or whatever. It meant a lot to me, and I really appreciate it. So I just wanna thank all of you, it was a pleasure to serve as your chair.
Thank you. I always feel like we do this closer to, or have our last meeting closer to the end of the academic year. But, I mean, obviously, thank you and congratulations to the class of 2019, I mean, I think they're a shining example of North Andover. But they wouldn't have gotten there, you know, without the, the support of their, their parents and their guardians and their families, and making them the best that they are. And of course, you know, our, and I can't name everybody, but you know, our teachers and our teaching assistants and, you know, cafeteria nurses and custodians and the entire staff of North Andover Public Schools, that has just really made this a great year, and I thank you all.
Thank you. First of all, thank Holly and Amy for leading us the last year, I really appreciate, and, you know, I can really appreciate what you've gone through in more recent months as well. So thank you for being a great leader. I would just say, obviously, our next meeting is our retreat on the 23rd. If people have ideas, suggestions that they'd see, you know, on the agenda for that, please reach out to myself, I'm sure myself and the new vice chair, we're meeting with the superintendent and his team in the coming weeks to develop an agenda. But I would love to get some ideas in advance so we can prepare for them and not just, you know, do it at the last minute. So obviously, this student handbook is gonna be the agenda, but we'll be talking about some other things. And as we develop that agenda going forward, I'm sure we'll reach out to all of you to let you know, so you guys can be prepared for that, so. On that, looking forward to tomorrow night, looks like the weather's gonna cooperate, so that's great, so. Hearing nothing else?
You don't have to make a motion?
Practice.
I'm about to practice. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to watch the Bruins game right now?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Maybley, all the favors, aye?
Aye.